Say, October 2020, 21, Planning Commission Regular Meeting, Rappahannock County, Virginia. All Planning Commission members are present. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, united on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Where is that?
Oh, I apologize. We are, we are missing Mary Catherine Ishi from Piedmont District. Okay. Sorry about that. So, we're not all present, but we do have a quorum, so we'll continue. First, first order of business is to adopt the agenda. I'd like to propose one change and then denote two things. We have four public hearings scheduled this evening, and in light of the likely robust comment on one of them, for efficiency's sake, I would like to reverse the order of the public hearing, so we will address basically items four, three, two, and then one. So, we'll be talking about the agricultural and forestal district renewals first, the Hubbard Tours home second, and then finally, the Wagner special use permit application for a kennel/dog training center. Finally, today, Ms. Summers notified us that the, under new business, the preliminary review for special use permit 21-10-01, and then also preliminary review of special exception permit 21-10-03 have been withdrawn by the applicant, so we will strike items one and three under new business, leaving only the preliminary review of special exception permit 21-10-02. So, with those changes, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Mr. Kohler, thank you.
Second. Ms. Durleit, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, thank you. Next order of business is adoption of the minutes from the September 15, 2021 Regular Meeting. Again, I want to thank Ms. Marlena Lee for her great work on the minutes. Ms. Ishi did circulate for everyone's review some corrections of typographic errors. I've reviewed those. I also had some corrections that I believe were reflected in Ms. Ishi's corrections. So, I would entertain a motion to adopt the minutes inclusive of Ms. Ishi's edits and thank her for her effort in this regard.
So moved.
Mr. Light, second.
Second.
Mr. Kohler, second. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, thank you. So, again, just for everyone who hears, who is here tonight, first of all, thank you for coming. It's always inspiring to see so many people come out for public hearings and other discussion of the Planning Commission. We will have four public hearings tonight, and in addition to that, there will be a general public comment period for each of the public hearings. If you have comments on one of the particular hearing subjects, then you should comment during the hearing for that particular item, and if you wish to offer general comments of, of interest of the Planning Commission on anything that comes to mind, that would be during the general public comment period, which will follow the public hearings. So, we will go ahead first and hold our public hearing regarding the renewal of the Red Oak Valley Agricultural and Forestal District, and my understanding is the Agricultural and Forestal District Committee met earlier today, and Ms. Summers, if you could just quickly summarize for us where we stand on that.
Thank you. So, this Agricultural District is up for renewal. The committee did meet at 6:00. They reviewed the applications and the draft resolution and recommended approval to this body and to the Board of Supervisors.
Okay. Thank you. And so then, following our public hearing and any recommendation from the Planning Commission, this would move on to the Board of Supervisors, correct?
That is correct.
And so, the recommendation would be for approval or denial of the renewal?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. So, with that, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing with regard to the renewal of the Red Oak Valley Agricultural and Forestal District. Anyone wishing to speak, here is your chance on this particular item. I'm not-
Steve Cott from Stonewall District, forward.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Thank you. I will close the public hearing. With that, does anyone on the Planning Commission have any comments? I'll go ahead and entertain a motion if anyone wants to put it forward.
So moved. I think that we approve the renewal of the Red Oak Valley Agricultural and Forestal District as recommended.
Okay. And again, Ms. Summers, the phrase, you know, that motion should be a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to approve the renewal of the-
Yes, sir.
-of the district. Thank you. Is there a second for Mr. Light's motion?
Awesome.
Thank you. Mr. Sharp, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay. Next on the agenda is a renewal of the East Wakefield Agricultural and Forestal District. Ms. Summers?
Again, this district is up for renewal. The Agricultural District Committee met at 6:00. Reviewed the application and the proposed resolution that were attached to board files and recommended approval to this body as well as the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. I will go ahead and open the public hearing for the renewal of the East Wakefield Agricultural and Forestal District if anyone wishes to speak on this matter. Thank you. I will close the public hearing. Any discussion? I'll entertain a motion regarding the renewal of the East Wakefield Agricultural and Forestal District.
I'll move to approve the district.
It's a recommendation-
Recommendation for approval.
Thank you. A recommendation of approval to the Board of Supervisors from Mr. Kohler, second?
Second.
Mr. Shulon, second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, thank you. Next on the agenda is special use permit number 21-09-01. This is Hubbard. This is tax map 1-54A for a tourist home, which I believe is located in Chester Gap. Ms. Summers, could you bring us up to date on this?
Yes, sir. Mrs. Hubbard wishes to operate a two-bedroom tourist home located at 41 Hibwaters Road in Chester Gap. The health department commented that they have records in their office of the system. It was started in 1972, two bedrooms. They had no objections to this application. VDOT commented that they had no concern with this application. Their, the location where the driveway ties into Hibwaters Road, there was no conflict at this time. According to VDOT, the current Hibwaters Road is state maintained and part of the private. The applicant was notified by mail of this public hearing and is not present.
Okay. Thank you. I will go ahead and open the public hearing regarding the special use, special use permit number 21-09-01 Hubbard, tax map 1-54A for a tourist home. Anyone wishing to speak regarding this application? I will close the public hearing. Any comments from members of the Planning Commission regarding this application?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just comment that I believe this matter of our, of our recent revision to our zoning ordinance requiring certain road standards for access to tourist homes is at least in question here, and as Ms. Summers noted, part of that road is state maintained, but I think it's also on a bit of a slope. So, I'd hope that the applicant would be here to perhaps answer some questions about that, but in light of the absence of the applicant to answer those questions, I would feel uncomfortable making any kind of definitive action on this application this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Light, do you wish to put forward a motion?
Not at this time. I guess I'd like to give my other colleagues. I know this is not in my district, but-
Mr. Shulon?
I've been up to the property and it, they, quote unquote paved road just ends shy of the driveway. It just seems to be an extension of the driveway. I agree with Mr. Light that there might be an issue there. I don't know if she needs to bring the last 30 feet of that road into compliance, or I'm not sure. There's so much wash out there, it's kind of hard to exactly measure how wide that road might be.
Okay. Anyone else?
Well, maybe we should request that information being provided to us about the road and whether it meets the specification.
This, this is the second month that we've had this thing here. Last month, we had questions and we requested her to be here this month to answer the questions, and she hasn't been. There's no question, isn't here. No response, no communications with the zoning office. So, I, I think that we just send this on to the BZA, a statement on no action, no decision, no information provided, that we had questions on the road that needs to be addressed, but the applicant didn't provide any information. They, they're the decision board that votes up and down on this. We just hear it and do a recommendation, so I think that we need to send it on to them with, with what has occurred in the last 60 days.
Okay. And, and then also, it's worth noting that the Board of Zoning Appeals would have to have a public hearing, so public would have an opportunity for further input. Mr. Henry, do you want to put forward a motion in some form?
I make a motion that we send this to the BZA with no recommendation and with a comment that we asked for additional information, which was not received. We had ordinance questions concerning the road, which we could not address, and period.
Okay. Is there a second for-
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Shulon. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of sending this to the Board of Zoning Appeals with no recommendation with the comments summarized in Mr. Henry's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All, all those against? Thank you. So, Ms. Summers, if you could just make sure that Mr. Henry's motion is recorded very specifically in, in whatever is communicated to the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, moving along. The final public hearing for tonight is regarding a special use permit number 21-09-05. Applicant is Wagner, tax map number 42-18. This is a kennel/dog training center. Ms. Summers, if you'd just bring us up to date on the application, and then we will go ahead and open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we reviewed this last month for a preliminary hearing, Mrs. Wagner does plan to operate a dog training center, kennel pursuant to 176E and 1766A. She proposes to construct a new building for dog training, an office, parking area, and exercise yard. The proposed hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and Saturdays, 10:00 to 3:00, closed on Sundays. It is proposed for group and private pet dog training, workshops, and walking trail, agility area, and dog park. There will be no breeding or overnight boarding of any animals. VDOT, VDOT have recently sent official comments in, which I emailed to all the planning commissioners and included our more dogs. They don't have any objections, nor does the health department. The proposed staff recommendation for the conditions is no overnight boarding, boarding or breeding of animals, complying with all state and local ordinances. Pet waste disposal shall comply with guidelines of USDA composting dog waste. There should be a minimum of twelve parking spaces provided. Any lighting shall comply with dark skies. All structures shall not be closer than 75 feet to our property lines, and outdoor exercise yard shall be fenced.
Great. Thank you. I think what we'd like to do is go ahead and proceed with the public hearing and then give members of Planning Commission a chance to ask any additional questions and hear from the applicant at that time. So, with that, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. We do have public comment period, as mentioned, so if you have general comments not about this application, please reserve those for the public comment period to follow. If you could keep your remarks to approximately five minutes, but we're not that strict. Just try to keep it relatively tight. If you do wish to speak, just in a minute, raise your hand. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this application. Anyone wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Do you want to help there?
Yeah, you do need to come up here, and there's a, if you need to adjust the height of the microphone, there's a handle on the, below the-
I'm at Hops.
No, you're, you're about right. Yeah, yeah.
I'll talk loud. How's that?
And if you, importantly, if you just state where you, where you live, voting district, in your name, please.
Donna McCon. I'm at 492 Viewtown Roads. I'm in Jackson District, and I'm right up the road from where this facility is planned. I run a dog boarding kennel and was, I've been in business now about 11 years. Actually, when I opened the facility, I had restrictions on it. Obviously, I have a special exception permit, but the noise was consideration, obviously. I am open, obviously, all night long. I mean, I don't have clients coming all night long, but to tell everybody, you know, I am in favor of Ms. Wagner's permit. I know her personally from working with her in the dog training business. I mean, I'm not a trainer, but my, our clients are similar, and I don't see any issues with this permit as far as our county is concerned, what she has proposed for the facility. I think the hours are good. She's not open really late, so it shouldn't disturb any of the adjoining properties, and I don't see a big traffic issue here either with cars coming in and out. Her classes are very small, the ones that I've seen, and she's going to do personal training too, so you're only going to have one client in there, maybe two at a time, you know, she's got another trainer there for personal training. The most I see for traffic-wise is if she has several people coming maybe for a little dog hike. I think the county, you know, what she was proposing to do too is the county really needs something like this. Everybody's going to Culpeper, Warrenton for dog training. There's no dog park out here, even though she's not an official dog park. She's going to allow only her clients in the facility. I'm sure it proposed times to do little dog walks. So, again, I am completely in favor and having the experience in the dog world and, and my neighbors all around me with no complaints on my facility with dogs out. I think my neighbor's dogs bark more. In this county, there's a lot of other, and I'm not going to tell you what the noises is, but a lot of other noises that are more disturbing than her having a dog training facility there. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir. And you, again, there's a handle on there if you, if you need to adjust the mic.
I'm Terry Bascham. I live in Amosville, and I would greatly, greatly appreciate this thing going through for her to get her training center, because right now, she's moving all over the place, finding a place to train, and this would be fantastic if she comes. And I think it'll be a, like was just said, one place to train would be really, really great, and it, she does good training. Anyway, thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishes? Yes, ma'am. Thanks.
I'm Carolyn Miller, and Wakefield District. And just second, what he said, I've taken my dogs to Charlotte for five years? A long ti, a seven, okay, a long time, and it would be a total feather in the county's cap to have this woman training for us. She won't toot her own horn, but she's awesome. She's responsible. She never had any problems with the Warrenton facility when she, both of them that we went to, and for us not to have to drive all the, with that way, the only thing I'm upset about is that I'm going to have to drive as far away as this is, because I'm in Flint Hill, but I will do it, so we shouldn't miss this opportunity.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, please.
Dabney Kirchman, Piedmont District, and I also would like to speak in favor of it. I've been training dogs with Charlotte for three, five years? Three, something like that, and she, we've taken our dogs over the years to many different trainers. She's just a world above any other person I've ever trained dogs with. She's super responsible and diligent, and, and I'd be thrilled to not have to be driving to Culpeper and Warrenton for her services. She's just amazing, so please approve it.
Thanks, Dabney. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am. That five-minute rule really scared everyone off here, because people-
No, we only have three seconds.
I mean, these are like 30-second comments.
I actually live in Culpeper, so I don't live in the county, but I drive all the way over to go to Charlotte's classes. I think there's a benefit to, she encourages children. People bring children, sometimes the children, the parents bring the child to train the dog, sometimes they just accompany, and she's very good with the children, and any time that they can get the dog to do something that it's supposed to do through encouragement and good behavior, you should see the smiles on their faces. So, I think it would be a benefit to the community and to young people's management of other, training of other animals or people even for their future.
Thank you. Ma'am, for the record, can we get your name, please?
Pardon me?
Your name. Can we get your name, please, for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Sarah Kreider.
Thank you, sir, and thanks for coming all the way up to Rappahannock County. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir. If you could please state your name and your voting district.
So, it's Chris Parish, Stonewall Hawthorne. So, by the way, this application says its property is in Jackson District. It's actually in Stonewall Hawthorne, because it adjoins my farm. And so, I appreciate everything you all do. So, you know, whatever I say, you all vote in your conscience. I'm not, no hard feelings. The, you all are probably underpaid.
Thirty dollars a month.
Yeah, I mean, we get, we get more than that. So, anyway, this, like I say, this adjoins my farm, and we also have a rental house across the street from this property. Now, when I was a kid, that road, Richmond Road, was actually a dirt road, and, but now it's a lot of traffic. Everybody coming out of Northern Culpeper County go up there and, and turn at that corner between Richmond Road and Forest Grove Road to get out to Amosville, to get on the highway to get to Northern Virginia. So, it's a horrendous amount of traffic these days. The, the rental property we have across the street, we're working on it, and three times now, my wife was pulling out and almost got T-boned with people just careening around the corner, and I do think traffic is an issue there. I used, when I went to school across the street there, Forest Grove, it was a two-room school, that property was all pine trees, and so, over the last, whatever, 65 or so years, it's, it's, it's become hardwood, and it is a beautiful piece of property from, from the inside, and I'm, I'm sure that Ms. Wagner's a wonderful dog trainer and needs a place to, to train, but what I'm really the most concerned about is the precedent that this would set, whereby you take a property that's in zone agriculture and you give it a, basically a commercial use, and there is, nobody lives there. So, it's a standalone, commercial-use property. The, so that, you know, the, it's kind of like, well, you know, if somebody's going to do something like that, why not do it at your house and not put it in somebody else's community? The, the structures that are going to be built are, are pretty large, and you add those up in like a 80 by 120 building, that's, that's huge. The other building's pretty big, parking lot. It's, it's going to take a lot of, a lot of clearing, and that's fine, it's anybody's right to do that, but it seemed like it'd be a lot easier to go somewhere where it's, you know, already cleared and, and easy to, to do, and it's worries me that it, it's one, the main thing about voting for stuff like this is, is it's not what, it's, it's not what's going on like here and now, it's what's the best long-term benefit for Rappahannock County? And if, if we start putting, you know, commercial use with, with, what the applicant has no skin in the game in terms of the inconvenience, the noise, you know, whatever. Now, I know that this lady is, is going to build a good business, and, and I think she stated before that she, you know, might sell it, so I'm not, you know, so worried about her. I'm really worried about, you know, who comes along in the future, and I'm also worried about unforeseen events, such that, let's just say, by the time this is all said and done, the land is bought, the buildings are built, I mean, that looks to me like a five or $600,000 investment, and, and I just worry about the viability of the business with the, you know, I think it's $150 a month per dog or something like that. I just wonder if that's, you know, I, I just worry that things can go wrong in the future that we don't anticipate, and you lose the building, have to sell it, the property, or have to sell it, or even, you know, forced to sell it, then, you know, what happens to the property then with all those big buildings? Is that, is that what, you know, is that going to be a contractor's yard where somebody can come in and park all these buildings in this huge 80 by 120-foot structure? So, it's, it's not about now, it's, it's about, it's about the future. So, I talked to my sister, so this is, adjoins the family farm, and my sister is actually the owner of that field that it adjoins. She lives in Massachusetts, and I talked to her today on the phone, and she's, she's opposed to it, because the house site on that property would be, you know, close to these woods, and she doesn't like the idea. I've also talked to a couple of the other neighbors that don't like the idea for, for the, you know, fear of extra noise and for the fear of, for the fear of, you know, people, kids just like coming over onto her property was her, her concern. I don't anticipate that happening, but that was her fear, her, her concern, so I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, just speak into the microphone so everyone can hear you.
Um.
Your name.
Caroline Church Parish. I live in Stonewall Hawthorne.
Can you speak into the microphone? Sorry.
Caroline Church Parish. I live in Stonewall Hawthorne. It was nice to have a well-planned proposal for a dog training and kennel. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be as eloquent in my speech, but I live, work, and rent to others in my little corner of the county. Ms. Wagner does not. Imagine this triangular piece of woods cut to accommodate a 30 by 40 office, an 80 by 20 metal arena building, which is 9,600 square feet. It's a big building. 52 by 62 parking lot. This is a lot of commercial building, square footage, with no plans to live there. In addition, the health department has stated the septic field cannot be under the proposed 100 by 100-foot fenced-in yard, as the current plan states, so more floors shall be demolished to create the needed septic field. This is at odds with the comp plan, principle seven, policy three, which vows to direct commercial and non-agricultural industry and business into existing commercial centers or designated growth areas. The location, sorry, the location is on two very busy secondary road intersections. At present, the yellow poles show the entrance location, but not a true visual of the proposed road width. VDOT requires a 52-foot wide for a low-volume commercial entrance, which this is under. So, take those poles that you're looking at on the road and quadruple it. This is at odds with the comp plan, principle seven, policy 4B, which directs that the development does not impede traffic flow on roads and at intersections. Our, I'm really nervous.
You're not nervous.
Wait. Our family has placed lands under conservation easements and has eliminated building lots to keep our space rural. By allowing, allowing a commercial dog facility to be built next to it would be at odds with my concept of land use, and you would be showing me that you place your faith in someone who has never lived, worked, or loved in my corner of the county. The comp plan, principle 10, policy 5, asks of the board to be mindful of adjacent jurisdictions, land use planning, and designated growth area. My family has tried to be good stewards of the land, and I hope you, as a board, are mindful of the adjacent lands, the mult, the local, multi-generational family owners with skin in the game, and vote no. No one has a crystal ball if a business will survive. I love dogs. I love obedient, trained dogs even more, but I cannot support this proposal. Agriculture with a special exemption for this application is simply changing agriculture to commercial, blatant commercial use.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Caroline, you didn't look nervous. It's fine. You were fine. We're probably more nervous. You were fine. We're probably more nervous.
Uh, my name is Rick Lambier and
Sure.
Yeah, so my name is Rick Lambier and, uh, I live at five oh one Richmond Road, which is directly across Richmond Road from where the site of, um, Ms. Wagner's, uh, potential training park would be. In, in listening to her clients, um, it's clear to me that Ms. Wagner is, in fact, probably a very good trainer and, um, probably very responsible person and, but I don't think that that's really what's at question here today. I think really what we're trying to ask is, um, how will this facility impact where we live? And I live directly across from it. And in respect to the committee's time and the people's time here, I won't go through, um, all the issues frankly that, that both Chris and Caroline brought up. But, uh, my wife and I, Alice, um, who, we've both lived on that farm for thirty-two years, raised our kids there. We're dog owners, love dogs. Um, we just see exactly what they see, which is, aren't we changing really what, what agricultural use is? Our farm, we also put in scenic easement. Um, one large reason why it was accepted was because of the view shed that the Shenandoah Park looks down on. And, you know, uh, when you think of a large, massive building, um, with a lot of square footage, really right across the street from there, I, I just see that really, once again, um, really causing more, um, noise, more view noise, if you will. So, um, once again, I, I, I don't favor, uh, this part going through.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak as part of this public hearing? Okay. You're, make sure you state your name.
I'm Alice Lambier. I'm his better half. I, I applaud everything that everybody has said and we are dog lovers and I completely understand everybody's passion about having a great trainer and a great friend. And, and I can tell this gal is, is probably really fabulous at what she does. One of the concerns that we have is that the application states that at this time, there doesn't plan, uh, there, she doesn't plan to have a kennel that she will board dogs in. And we're very concerned that in the future that might change. Were this to be given approval and go forward on its basis, we're slightly alarmed, but down the road, if her plans change and she decided to board dogs, that would greatly impact our region, our entire area. We'd be able to hear them and we're, that's what we're really concerned about. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak as part of this public hearing? Yes, ma'am. And thank you again, everyone, for coming out. It's really an important process.
My name is Danette Foreman and I'm the owner of the property. This property's been in my family for about sixty years and it's been sitting the entire time. It's been untouched. We've had it for sale before, but we had no takers. And when this offer came through, quite frankly, I was pleased, obviously. I think that Ms. Wagner has done an extraordinary job in the planning and presenting to the board. And, um, I think, um, that she should be given the opportunity to pursue her, her goal and her dream. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, thanks a lot for everyone's succinct and thoughtful comments. With that, I'll close the public hearing. I did, just, uh, full disclosure, I did get one letter, um, from someone who could not physically attend. And I, I think it's only right that I read it into the record. Hopefully I can stay under my five-minute time limit. This is, um, from Beth Foster Livingston, uh, to the Rappahannock County Planning Commission. I would like to make a few comments, if I may, via email, in support of the dog training facility proposed by Charlotte Wagner of K-9ology, VA, to be located in Amosville, Virginia. Unfortunately, we have a conflict with our children and their extracurricular activities. We can't be there in person. I've gotten to know Charlotte well since December twenty twenty. I found Charlotte via word of mouth due to her talent at training puppies and dogs. I've seen firsthand her dedication and desire to help us humans understand our dogs and to be able to provide them with the training they deserve to become the best pups they can be. Her honesty, integrity, and skillset have kept us on as clients as we move from puppy training to other levels of training. I, for one, would support her facility and am excited for this to be built so our dog, Loki, can benefit from the opportunities a facility like this can provide. I've heard her designs for the location, it sounds amazing for dogs and their humans. To have a facility that offers different levels of training, including agility, obedience, and even conformation in an area that actually has the space and safety for the dogs in mind. A facility that will train a limited amount of dogs at one time, no overcrowding, not pushing a huge training lesson. So both get the best available training and on top of it, to be able to do this in beautiful Rappahannock County. I know she picked this parcel of land for a specific reason, as it has the area needed for her facility, ease of access for her clients, new and old, and the fact that the area is far enough in to avoid any noise issues with the neighboring lands. This will not be a kennel nor a boarding facility, so her hours of operation would be consistent with other businesses. There would not be any issues either with late or early morning traffic noise. I look forward to seeing the completion of this facility and welcome this type of business to the area. As you know, a lot of puppies were adopted over the past year and the adoption owning of dogs won't be changing anytime soon. There needs to be a reputable, sound place of business in the area for dogs to be trained appropriately and this will be the go-to facility once completed. Plus, a little competition in this area is good for all involved. We currently enjoy coming out to Rappahannock, Rappahannock County as often as we are able. Having a training facility would be another great excuse to head out of the DMV and enjoy the area. We like visiting the surrounding towns, enjoying a late lunch, visiting wineries and short hikes. Thank you for your time, Beth Livingston of Reston, Virginia. So, that's now on the record. Just a, a, a couple or one procedural thing and then, uh, I'd like, we'd like to hear from the applicant. So, um, if we do, uh, vote on this tonight, the path is to make a recommendation of approval or denial to the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Board of Zoning Appeals will then hear the application. And then the Board of Zoning Appeals comprised of, of five court-appointed members would, um, ultimately make the, the decision on whether to approve or deny the permit. So, uh, Ms. Wagner's, uh, going through this public hearing and then there will be another public hearing before the Board of Zoning Appeals regardless of what our recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals is. So with that, um, Ms. Wagner, would you, um, like to make any remarks, including in response to some of the comments heard tonight?
Is that okay?
You can adjust, there's a handle, you squeeze it and then, yeah. There you go.
Okay, so first, first of all, I want to say thank you for all of you guys who came out here for support. You guys are the best. So, as mentioned, um, I've been a dog trainer now for seventeen years. So, I started off in Maryland and then I moved to England, then I moved back here. I had two brick and mortars in Warrenton. And the business itself has sustained for seventeen years, kind of on the financial side of things. But really, I want something central so I can really invest in my community, okay? This is not just a vanity project, is not just a project for me. It is what I can give back to my clients. So, um, a couple of things were raised and I think, um, I definitely have some comments on some of the concerns. So first of all, um, traffic. Am I allowed to approach and hand you guys a document?
That's fine. Sure. And, and just for those who are here from the public, um, Ms. Wagner's handed us, uh, it's titled K-9, K-9ology Proposed Schedule for Classes. And I'm sure you'll review what's in here with us.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, I think we can kind of hit a couple of birds with one stone here. First of all, um, when I looked at the property, I met with Mr. Norris. One of the things that we did discuss is that bend in that corner.
Mr. Norris of VDOT.
Of VDOT, yes, Mr. Norris of VDOT. We did discuss the sightlines and the stopping distance. And I originally had assessed whether or not I would like the entrance to maybe be on Forest Grove Road or whether I would be able to place the entrance somewhere other than where it had been indicated on the plat. And the conclusion was that that location in particular is where you have the best advantage for stopping and sightline distances. When I went around to the neighbors and I handed out reports, I did actually stop at one of the parish properties and handed off a leaflet while they were having work done on one. That house sits a little bit snuggier on that corner, on the opposite side, where they were explaining, oh, cars are almost blowing through, than on the opposing side, about seven, eight hundred feet, opposite is where our entrance would be. Where the sticks are located, that is more an indicator so that we know where the driveway is. Those were not placed as any type of a measurement to say, this is how wide it's going to be. I did speak with somebody, um, and did an interview for someone who, who does land clearing and I discussed with him what the VDOT requirements were and what the code was and what was recommended. We then walked the lot and we went through and we said, okay, yes, there is an area of the drainage field that will need to be cleared, but the nice thing is because of the topography and a ridge that exists there, we're not going to have to clear as much out as we'd like. Then, when it comes to the actual buildings themselves and the building site and the clearing that needs to be done, an eighty by a hundred and twenty, to give you some perspective, is large, don't get me wrong. And we kind of went with those dimensions because that's what the AKC standard is for an indoor agility ring. It is still smaller than a one hundred by two hundred foot riding facility, which is what you can see spread throughout the county. There are properties all around, including across from Forest, uh, from Richmond Road, across from our property, where one of the owners actually has a riding center and riding facility. So the size of the building, we're talking more about a small horse-riding arena, if, if you'd like to give that some perspective, as well as our thirty by forty is the size of a garage. Now, last time I remember, there were some concerns of what would happen with the property should the business no longer exist or shall you, if, if we were to sell. The type of structures that we are putting up are pretty generic. They are pole barns, they are garage-type structures, we are putting in a road. Yes, we are putting in a parking lot. It's not a huge parking lot. We are putting in, um, these metal buildings, but they can easily be repurposed should somebody want to build a home there in the future. We are going to run electric. We will be running, um, a drainage field so that step, septic can be installed. There's nothing about our plans that alters the land to such an extent that it either cannot be restored or repurposed within a residential capacity. So, if somebody wanted to move there and, yes, convert it to ag land, they easily could. If they wanted to use it and move there and board their own horse there and have a horse-riding arena, they could convert it to that. If they, there's multiple areas on that lot and part of the beauty of the lot is the trees. We have the ability, because it's fairly level, to actually have multiple building sites and be able to accommodate any type of change that any future potential owner may want to make. In terms of, um, in terms of the barking and the noise, um, like I said originally, we are not a dog kennel. Financially, it's not always viable to put up a building unless it's as its own endeavor, then you have to hire extra staff. I am, I have no interest in offending my neighbors. We have taken very careful consideration of the positioning of the buildings, where we put them, how far they are from adjacent lots. Um, in terms of it being an eyesore or being any concern visually, the, you can't see when you go into the property where, where we propose our building site. You actually can't see the house on the opposing side. So I'm assuming that it's far enough back that if a building were to be erected, it would not be right in your face for those homes that are opposite of the street. And in terms of the sightlines, can you actually pull up the plot? Is that possible? The one that has the drawing up?
Yeah, you're welcome to walk up there.
So, I'm assuming the parish properties, this is the Baptist church, the parish properties would be along this side, okay? This is five hundred and fifty feet to that corner. This is about five hundred feet to that corner. The, the proposed building of these sites and these properties, it's about two hundred and fifty feet from the side of the road, is nowhere near those corners or where the woods are for that property. One of the reasons why we can't build there is this whole area back here is ramble and it slopes down and it's actually very damp. So I have no interest in actually building anywhere near that. Our exercise area, we are going to only selectively remove vegetation. We've already identified some trees that are dead and some trees that are huge and beautiful and we would like to keep them. For our purposes, it is in our favor to actually keep the majority of the forest. Yes, we will clear for the larger building. Yes, we will clear for the parking lot and for the other, um, office site. But realistically, we're not looking to take raw land and just shred it to pieces. It's in our favor to actually have the natural shade.
While you're, thank you very much. While you're at the microphone, maybe, um, if you don't mind,
Sure.
we'll just open the, the floor to the members of the Planning Commission and they'll likely have questions for you. And so if anyone has questions specifically for Ms. Wagner, now would be a good time to ask her. Mr. Light, this is in Stonewall Hawthorne, so you can, you may begin.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Thank you for the additional information. I first want to applaud you. I think, as I mentioned at the last meeting, not only is it apparent that you're an excellent dog trainer, um, your application is incredible and detailed and, uh, very robust. You know, to me, the, the questions here are really those that have been staged about the appropriateness of this use within this particular community. And I guess one of the questions that's come up and you addressed here a bit is the, uh, is the, is the traffic flow? And, and I wonder, you know, we've al, we've heard already this evening from a lot of folks who are anxious to, to come and use this facility. And your, your comments about, um, you know, averages and, and the like. You know, I, it's not really our, our business to evaluate the, the commercial merits, but the intensity of the investment, given this scale, does seem to suggest that, that ideally you would want to expand, uh, beyond this level. So I guess I'm trying to understand, um, you know, what, what this, maybe you could describe for us a little bit better what this, uh,
Yes, so the document in front of you gives you an idea of what we will be using the facility for. So, private lessons, and they all have a schedule that looks like that in front of them. Private lessons are when we see somebody and we're working with an individual or a household with a dog. So you come to me, you need one-on-one tutoring with your dog. That means there is one, the average, I think, is like one and a quarter cars per household for those types of appointments. A group class, which means multiple people get together and usually those group classes last the same day and time for X amount of weeks. That is limited up to five participants. We do not do more than that because we kind of specialize in a more personal approach. So if you take those averages and you see what the facility is being used for, you're getting an average of, um, one point eight cars per day, per hour. I would argue that that is not significant traffic. Now, keep in mind, this is the plans for our facility. My other trainer, who is also a full-time staff member, and I will still be going part-time to people's houses, which means we get income there too. We also will still continue to host events at parks and we, like, recently partnered up with Cobbler Mountain Sellers. We're doing a, an event at the end of the week, actually. So, in terms of viability for what our purpose and our needs are, yes, this plan and this budget and this addresses that. To give you an idea, if you're asking, are you asking about the finances and whether financially it's viable?
No, if I may, um,
Absolutely.
I guess, the, the, I just want to drill down on the, the question of, you know, averages are great.
We average a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty dollars an hour. So like financially it's
But, but the question is, is not what the average expectation is, it's what the limit is because it's that limit that is going to ultimately be the determining factor for how much it actually impacts the neighbors and the community. Because it's that limit that is going to ultimately be the determining factor for how much it actually impacts the neighbors and the community. So, what I'm really trying to get to is, um, you know, this appears to be, I assume, but you can correct me if I'm wrong. Kind of a hypothetical schedule of, of a, of a typical, um.
Yes.
You know, week.
Yes.
Um, and I guess I'm, I just want to point that out that the, that the intensity of the use is overall, um, fairly pertinent. But I, I think this is helpful, it's, it does, I know the application referred, I think, just solely to the discussion about the average being twenty and this.
Yep.
I think this helps explain what that's about. Um, I guess the other thing that I wanted to talk about and I appreciate um, uh, your comment that you don't like barking dogs.
I hate barking dogs attraction.
That's a, that's a.
I wouldn't be doing my job.
Quality uh, in, in a dog trainer and hopefully you uh, are reducing the number of barking dogs in the world. I know I have one that would benefit from your services, I'm sure. Um, but, could you talk a little bit about, you know, the noise and, you know, inevitably. Even if they're only the dogs on their way to your services.
True.
There will be barking.
True.
I mean, could, could you, have you, I, I, I'm guessing you've um, you've thought about this question.
Yes, I have, yeah, a little bit.
I'm guessing you have, could you give us a little bit more about, you know, a, and, you know, not just for our benefit, but from other folks who, you know, in the community who might be, you know. I think rightfully concerned about this. Uh, you know, what can you say about noise levels and um, you know, the, the, the impact of these distances and the woodenness? Do you have, is there more you can add to that part of the discussion?
Um, if you're looking for decibels and actual, like readings, I do not have those, not gonna lie. Um, what I can tell you is to alleviate some of that concern. Is, number one, our operations hour, right, we're keeping it within real, re- reasonable hours, you know, they're not, there's not open and closed kennels. I think the whole conversation goes back to why do dogs bark?
That seems pretty existential, I'm not sure.
No, but here's the thing, the answer to that actually is, barking is a side effect always of something else. And my job is to fix the something else so your dog doesn't bark. So like, if your dog barks because somebody walks up to your door, they're alerting you that somebody's coming to the door. If you don't care, you keep letting your dog bark and you let somebody in, if you do care, you wait for them to be quiet and then you let the person in. So that dog's barking out of frustration and excitement. Then why else do dogs bark? The people who complain about their neighbor's dogs barking, it's the ones who have separation anxiety, who are left locked at home without any supervision, who are lonely, who persistently howl and bark. Yeah, we're not boarding dogs and to be honest, I wouldn't be doing my job if I, even if we were boarding down the road, if I kept a dog that was so distressed, that it were constantly vocalizing. Dogs bark because they play and they're excited, dogs bark because they're frustrated. Once again, my job is to put the dog in a situation where I facilitate learning. And if the dog is at that level where it is not just occasionally barking, but persistently barking, there is another issue at hand and either that environment is not conducive to that dog. Or that dog is not conducive to that environment, in which case alternate arrangements would be made anyway. The, and I understand the novel concept of, you know, we think about like the hunt kennels or we think about, you know, boarding operations and we think about going into, you know, PetSmart and all the dogs at the grooming shop going nuts. It's not the type of operation that we run and it's kind of, that goes against my job description. Um, so I think the reality is, is you have to address the barking and understand barking is a multifaceted thing. It's not a cut and dry situation where it's like, well, we could just all put shock collars on them, no.
Thank you for that, I, I just have one, one other question a, at this point. Uh, we did talk about the cars, a, and I'm sure it's in here somewhere, but how many dogs are we talking about uh, in, in this hypothetical?
Maximum of five. Our group classes are a maximum of five, yep. And I believe that the county requirements is you have to have a minimum of two acres for a kennel license and you can have up to ten dogs per acre. Which means over a hundred dogs and that is so not ever happening.
So this configuration though, this hypothetical configuration would be roughly thirteen dogs, uh, or up to thirteen dogs coming in and out.
Yep, pretty, yep, exactly, yep.
Thank you, I don't have any other questions at this time.
Okay, um, why don't we just proceed down the line, Mr. Henry, any questions?
Sure, um, when I look at your schedule, when I look at your schedule here, it seems to be a little bit in conflict with, with what you told us last month. As, as I recall, last month, uh, you stated that uh, you was gonna have a class every hour.
Yep, and after we spoke, I actually changed that and worked with the schedule to make sure that we can accommodate that. Also makes me realize it gives us time to prepare for different classes.
So, so, so from last month to this month, you basically took your schedule and cut it in half?
No, the schedule is the same, the workload is the same, the way that we spaced it out would be different.
When I'm looking at your schedule here, you know, you, like, for example, you open at ten, then you, but your first uh, session is at eleven o'clock. And then, there's another session at, at twelve thirty, another session at two. So, last month, it was every hour you was having uh, classes coming in, now it seems like it's every hour and a half, two hours. And then you got a big gap between three thirty and five thirty here. Uh, so it seems like you moderated the, the schedule here to accommodate a lower impact to us. So, with this schedule that you got here, there's no reason why, if you get approval, two years from now, next month, I don't know when things done, whenever it's done. You could go back to a substantially larger, bigger schedule, correct? If you wanted to.
If I wanted to potentially, right now?
You could go.
Not, not with the way we're doing things right now. Because the reason the schedule is blocked off this way is I would be seeing appointments in the morning.
So, so last month, you had one schedule that was like forty percent, fifty percent bigger than this? And now you.
No, it's the same schedule.
You changed your business plan to something a lot less, to show less impact, is that true?
No. This is the exact, exact same schedule, the difference is.
It's not what you told us last month.
Just let her finish.
Here, here, I'm getting to the bottom of some things, okay? I didn't interrupt you, don't interrupt me. But, you told us last month, every hour you're gonna have a different class, every hour.
Yes.
This, and you're open from ten to seven, that's, that's nine hours a day. So that tells me nine, nine sessions, nine classes. Now, when I look at this, I see one, two, three, four, five, six.
No, but there weren't nine classes last time, last time, we never see more than five appointments a day, that is our max. The other time, and that's why there, I was able to space them out now, is we can do projects like film videos for our clients for YouTube, we are developing booklets. We are working on putting together seminars, we're working on putting together blog posts and things like that. Now that we have the opportunity for a facility, the number of appointments that see clients has not changed. What has changed is because of my workday, I'm able to rearrange appointments and allow, A, my trainer some time to take a break in between appointments. And B, allow us to do things, whether it's maintenance on the property while we're there. Or whether that means doing other endeavors or jobs that are outside of meeting with clients.
You're looking for an approval here that basically gives you the hours of operation that you stated here from, from ten to seven and then on Saturday. So basically, you're gonna be open fifty hours a week.
Yeah.
And within that fifty hours a week, uh, you're gonna have dogs coming and going.
Yes.
And people coming and going.
Yes.
And, you know, one point eight cars per hour is, is, is using a lot of fractions here, six point two five cars, one point two five cars, this and that. To come up with what appears to be a very, very, very low impact. On, on property, on the neighborhood. And uh. Uh, it, it seems that this might be understated. Um, you know, we, looking back, we have very seldom ever done these type of uses on standalone properties without a residential uh, use on the property. You know, it, it, the ordinances tend to have been developed with thinking that if somebody moves to a property, uh, and they have an occupation. Whether it's maybe a plumber, a farrier, uh, electrician, maybe a small contractor or whatever. There's provisions to, to allow uh, them to have some home, home occupational use there, maybe a, a potter or an artist or something like this. But in this particular case here, you're proposing to build about a ten thousand square foot building, you're not planning on living there. Uh, and you stated last month that it was your intention to, to run this business uh, for a period of time until maybe your retirement and then put it up and sell it. And hopefully as a, as another uh, continuation of, of the dog facility. And it seems like to me, what, what we're proposing to do here is to, to give you a permanent uh, commercial use on this ten or twelve acres of land. With no connection to a residential use, which all your other neighbors uh, tend to have here. And it seems to be in conflict with the neighborhood and somewhat with the ordinance where we, we direct commercial activities. And I see this purely as commercial activities to the village areas. Uh, and I'm seeing, if, if, you mentioned that these buildings are very adaptive to other uses and that concerns me too. Because when you decide to say, oh, if your life changes or, or whatever, it doesn't uh, get sold as, as a dog facility. Uh, with, with the borders it has around there of, of, of screening, I could very easily see somebody come in here with uh. You know, that may have a very larger size construction company, employ equipment there, use the buildings for uh, uh, equipment repair, which has happened in other places in Rapaha County. I know some years ago, there was a gentleman in Castleton, he retired from his uh, dealership and had a Morton building built and he was doing car repair there until he died. And did great work, but it was uh, kind of a backdoor commercial use uh, in an ag area. And, you know, it could be a, a cabinet shop, uh, any number of uses could go into this building. And it would be attractive to a potential person because they wouldn't have to pay the extra money for residential use. I mean, a house will cost you three, four, five hundred thousand dollars depending upon what you build. But somebody could come in here and say, hey, you know, I could come to Rapaha County, buy this property, use it as a base of operations, eleven acres and pay X dollars for it. Which is less money than what I would pay for a, a commercial lot in uh, Brandy Station or Warrant or maybe Marshall Gainesville. And uh, it, it, I think I'm gonna do that. So, I think it attracts commercial industrial uses into our, our ag areas. And we've had situations with this over the past years, we had a situation where, you know, we're still dealing with a property on two eleven down in Amisville where, you know, it's a question of a. You know, contractor's yard and what was allowed, what wasn't allowed, and that has gone to court and things like this. Uh, some years ago. We had David Cole uh, buy the property here on Harris Hollow and he came in and was gonna build a culinary institute. No corresponding residential use. And he was gonna build this culinary institute, a restaurant, and he was gonna put a bar in. And so I said to John McCarthy, I said, John, what do we have here when Mr. Cole leaves this property? He says, well, you have a restaurant in agriculturally sound area. So, uh, and that failed. And uh, I see this as setting a, a, a bad precedent uh, uh, for us to follow. The reason we do this ordinance too is that we recognize that there are places that things will fit and places where they don't fit. Case in point, we had the uh, Monicerio School come in uh, to Flint Hill and they wanted to buy a property up uh, Bearwall Road. All the neighbors came out, they had a great plan, all the neighbors came out totally against it for traffic and all these other reasons. And we turned it down, but we said, come back with a better property and uh, we will gladly reconsider. And they came back with a property on the edge of Flint Hill uh, on five twenty-two and we pretty quickly approved it. I think you got a good uh, use, you did a great presentation, you know, if you was on Shark Tank, I think I would jump up and say, I'll invest money. But this is, this is beyond, you know, a, a financial thing, it's a land use thing and I sets, I think it sets a bad precedent. And I think you would be probably more appropriate to, to have a larger piece of land closer to a, a major road like two eleven, uh. Five twenty-two or something like that, so. And the end result is that I'm not gonna support the application. And number two is I think we have a legal problem here too. The legal problem is it was, it was misadvertised. If this is truly uh, Stonewall Hawthorne and not Jackson, it needs to start all over again. Uh, same thing happened with Bill Fletcher here a couple of years ago, he was applying for his BNB or whatever he wanted to do on two thirty-one. It's the wrong um, district advertised and I had to start all over again, so I think you got a problem there too. That's all.
We'll look into that separately, thanks for your comments, I apologize for inserting myself.
You're very good at that sometimes, sorry. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Never.
I have a thicker skin these days, okay, um, Mr. Shark, yep?
Um, I have a dog actually that barks all night long. And I, I think it may be out of boredom, but anyway.
I was gonna say, so like, how much exercise is your dog getting, yeah?
She gets a lot of, a lot of exercise, but anyway. Um, okay, well, I just have a couple of questions, maybe only one, but maybe it's a compound question, but. Do you ever work with dogs where the owners are not present? I mean, that's a maybe, right?
Well, it's more like, can you define that question? So like, yes, for some breeders, I have like, taken their dogs to Home Depot to socialize them because they don't have time to socialize them, so like, I take the dogs out and work them. But do I ever like, take dogs?
Well, okay, let's say if I brought a dog to you and then maybe I'd go somewhere else for the day.
And then come back?
Yeah.
Depends on the client, I would consider it.
You would consider that, okay, and so, you know, you can have a situation where somebody lives a long way away and wants the dog. I mean, so I, I'm just saying that I could see this, where you would want to be able to keep dogs overnight. You don't see that ever possibly happen?
Like, to be honest, we have Donna and we have a great working relationship with her and like.
Can you um, speak?
Yeah, I'm sorry, um, so we have a great working relationship with Donna and one of the appeals of this property was that she is literally like two miles down the road from us. And so, for any kenneling needs, we're gonna be using her. Now, do we have the opportunity to take a dog that's boarding with her, bring it to our place, do agility for a week and then return it to her? That was, that's my ideal scenario. Right now, financially, they're, financially to build a kennel, kennel facility, which is not, would not be our primary business. It's just not in the cards right now. Now, I am willing to say, you know what, no dogs overnight is part of the conditions. As long as I have the opportunity of in the future, should my business grow and exchange, that I would have the opportunity to present it as such, at a later date. Um, but for right now, other than keeping dogs in a crate, maybe in our office, in those rarer occasions where that would happen, in which case the dog would be contained in a building in a crate. Um, no, we're not gonna board dogs.
Okay, so, but these, there are some staff recommended conditions. I gotta know, is it, I mean, I'm, this may be silly, but no overnight boarding or breeding of animals?
Yes, because one of the things of, um, when I went through the permitting stuff in the zoning ordinance. One of the things to be um, approved or in, not approved is a breeding establishment. So somebody who breeds dogs under a kennel license actually falls into a different subcategory than somebody who boards dogs. And then we fall into this not a category, so um, that's why I mentioned that in there because it, it doesn't apply to either of those things.
Um, well, I, I just say, my observation is, obviously, you're a wonderful dog trainer and you have a lot of people speaking very highly of you. And, I mean, it's easy to be swayed by that, obviously. And I do think that the issue here is the appropriateness of the use in that location. So, were it not to be recommended, I think that would be the question, not your skills or, you know, how you're seen, I mean, that, that would just be much.
Do I get to ask a question?
Sure.
Just for clarification, is it then basically without a residence, that my business model doesn't have a place here?
I didn't say.
No, I'm not saying that, you said that, I'm, I'm asking that as a general question.
Um, I think Mr. Henry hit on it, so the idea of special exception or special use permits basically is that certain uses are okay in some places from a land use standpoint and in other places they are not, so.
So it's primarily based on location, not whether or not you're.
Location and other factors, whatever they might be, which is what this discussion relates to, it's a, it's a good question, but. That's, that's what all of this is about and trust me, I'm learning along the way too, but that's, that's the whole purpose.
It's like, do I have to live where I work, like, is that the only way, like, do I have to live where I work, is that the only way that, that that would be plausible, yeah, okay.
Could I, could I add to that?
Go ahead, please.
I think the, the, the matter at hand is that, that these uses that are sort of non-traditional and are subject to the special exception and special use. Are subject to the general standards that have these pretty ambiguous judgment calls about harmony with the surrounding community and how it fits in. And that's the context in which, um, you know, we, we listen to the concerns of the neighbors. Uh, we don't have to, you know, it's not a vote, it's not a vote of your neighbors, but it's, you know, it's how we kind of judge, how does this use fit within this very specific community?
It helps paint a picture for you, sure, sure, sure.
And the other point to that question is, there's. And the other point to that question is, there's a category, like somebody has a mechanic shop next to their house where they do a little mechanicking or woodworking shop. It's tied to a house. I mean, that is a separate category. I don't know if that really relates here or not. But that is, I mean, that is a different category of use compared to if somebody just had a piece of land with just a shop on it.
Yeah, I understand, okay. Thank you for the clarification.
You have any other comments on it?
I think I have one.
Okay, Rick, anything?
Just a couple of things, I think we've covered a lot. The, just a couple of specifics on here. You have a fenced yard. And is that, what is the purpose of the fenced yard?
So that we can exercise the dogs off-leash.
Okay. And so they would be, they're turned out in the yard?
Yep, with their owners present.
With their owners?
Yep.
All right. And then the arena is the big building, and that's going to be, that's eighty by one hundred and twenty?
Eighty by one hundred and twenty, yep.
Okay, which is a little bigger than what you have in your report, but ninety-two hundred, it's ninety-six hundred. The, could you clarify for me that the entry was brought up a few minutes ago as being shown one way but being another way? And I missed that.
So one of the things that I did in order for me to get a visualization of the property is I actually took step-in posts and got one of the measuring tools and actually went and measured everything. There are two electric fence posts where the entrance is going to go. That was primarily for me to mark so that when I drive past or when I go there, I see where the entrance is. And it's supposed to indicate this is the location. I believe that there was an impression that that was the width and that was a measured, or a calculated measured attempt at the driveway. It was not. It's literally, I just put one on either side without measuring to be like, this is where it goes. The, and then the, so there was an existing road there already. There is gravel there and a culvert, which will need to be replaced. And the gravel goes about a hundred and seventy feet into the woods following where we're going to be, we plan on building. But the width is going to be a minimum of twelve feet. It's not going to be as narrow as the stakes appear to be.
Okay. And the buildings themselves, are you, what is the flooring in the buildings?
So with most of these buildings, you can actually put them on a gravel pad, so we don't need to pour concrete. So basically, they need a level gravel pad. And then they take the buildings, they have different wind ratings and snow load ratings, and they anchor them down into the pad to meet code with auger pieces that are about two and a half feet long.
So the office is a gravel?
Yep, gravel pad, yep.
What is a gravel pad?
It's six inches deep of crush-and-run gravel that they take, and they put a layer, and they compact it, and they take a layer and they compact it so that it's, it's denser. So it's hard, exactly.
And does it have dust on top, or is it just...
So crush-and-run, the nice thing is it's gravel with dust, and the dust is what allows it to compact. So it's a combination, it's a mixture of the two, yeah.
I guess you'll want to wear shoes.
Yes. And then inside, if we do the gravel pads inside the actual arenas, we can then also use recycled rubber mulch if we want it to be a little bit softer down the road. But, yeah.
I think the question for me is that this is putting a, a straight commercial use into the ag area. And that's, that is the, that's, that is a question I have as to whether that's appropriate and whether or not that sets some precedent that would reflect on other decisions in the future. So that's, that's all I have at the moment.
Thanks, all very good questions, and thanks for standing there so long. Ms. Ishi?
Yes, thank you very much. Those are here. I'm sorry to keep you standing for so long.
It's okay, I shift weight.
Shouldn't have to be an endurance contest for people who come before a public hearing. So thank you for answering all our questions. To me, this, this shows the benefit of holding a public hearing because it does help us flush out issues that maybe weren't obvious at first. I do think you are to be congratulated in having done an incredible job of thinking through every conceivable issue and how you can improve it. And it's really a very impressive application. I also continue to believe that this kind of use is, is a really good use out in our county. It, I've personally taken my dogs to a number of training sessions of this kind. They are low impact as a general rule, and I think that's a good use for this county. But I've had a number of people speak to me outside of this hearing as well as hearing what I have today. And I think it is correct that the question is, for special exception, what is appropriate for this parcel? And it's not about you as an applicant. You're obviously a great applicant. The use is an interesting, good use in general. But is that the right use on this property? And it runs with the property, not with the applicant. So the two key issues that I think folks have already raised, but I'll just say it so that, you know, you kind of know where I'm coming from, is that you can, you can change ownership of this, and then it's in different hands. So all these great things that you are proposing to us, unless they are cemented into the application, don't necessarily stay as such. And also, I, even on my tenure now on this planning commission, have seen a number of instances where applications were granted ten years ago with absolutely no, never, this will never be allowed. And then they come back again, and you're like, yeah, okay. So I think what we always have to look at is, is this use quite separated from you and all other good things, a good use for this parcel? So I wanted to actually, well, I'll ask Michelle. Michelle, the zoning administrator, Ms. Summers, it appears to me that what we have on the zoning map that I see here is RR5 adjacent, right adjacent to this property, but ag and ag, ag forest will separate, are surrounding it, am I correct? Can you tell me anything else about the other zoning surrounding this property? Is there any commercial zoning nearby?
No, ma'am, there's no commercial zoning nearby.
Do you have any idea where the nearest commercial zoning is on this?
No, no.
Pardon me?
No, no.
Okay. I don't either. But it doesn't appear here.
No, no, not in the district.
It doesn't appear it. And then, so that, that, thank you. The other question is, just for your, specific to your program, is, are you planning to have shows and competitions for agility showing here? And will, like, are you going to have like dog shows and agility contests and things where members of the public might come in and, and watch the dogs?
I think it's one of these, we're not open to the general public right now. If down the road we decided to pursue that type of an endeavor, then I'd probably get a permit for the weekend for, for an event and get a permit for that event rather than a general use permit for that type of situation.
I don't, okay. I don't know if you would need a permit necessarily, but...
So like, if people, you know, because it would be a greater capacity potentially for cars or greater traffic or whatever. I was under the assumption that for those types of events, I would make a permit or request a permit for that event.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have right now, thanks.
I have one comment that's based on something you stated, which I'm not sure. We do, or we have granted, Board of Zoning Appeals has granted permits that are specific to the current owner.
Oh.
So, I mean, that, we do that. So I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's possible, whether there's something about a tourist home that renders that possible. But I will say that that is a possibility.
Okay.
Just for the record.
It was my understanding, although that's great to hear, you're the BZA person, so I'll defer to you. It's my understanding that an applicant could agree to such a condition, but it's questionable.
The board should assert that condition.
Under the BZA, okay?
Okay, okay.
I'll defer to you on that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ishi. Mr. Shulon?
I'll keep it short. I kind of, I tend to agree with Mr. Sharp and Mr. Henry about bringing us a commercial endeavor to this particular property. And I wholeheartedly agree with Mr. Henry that we'd love for you to find another piece of property that I think is more conducive to this activity. I think we'd have our support. I just, unfortunately with this piece, I don't think I'd be recommending this for approval.
Okay, thank you. I just had one quick question. Mr. Light mentioned general standards applicable to special use and special exception permits in the zoning ordinance. And he's right that there's somewhat amorphous standards, but we have to look at those and look at the property and its proposed use. And the one thing that maybe you could help with, and maybe everyone here knows it already, and I just have missed it. You talked about early on when you conceived of this project, going around and talking to some of the neighbors.
Yes.
And kind of explaining your plan. So I wonder if you could take inventory for us of any neighbors nearby the property, adjacent to the property, who said, no problem, it's fine, fine with me? Because I believe tonight we've, we've heard from at least two property owners relating to at least three properties, I think, who've, who've said they're not comfortable with the proposed use. And so I just want to have a whole picture, if you have it, of who you've spoken with? Who lives near or adjacent to the property?
So I know that Betty Settle, who is across the road, when I went door-to-door by person, that she said that there was no issue with the use. Two doors down, the lady who owns the horse-riding facility on Richmond Road, opposite kind of from the corner of our property. She originally had concerns about barking and about a potential kennel situation. But after emailing with her, her concerns were alleviated. And then there is another member named Catherine who lives behind the property opposite of the Baptist Church. And I saw her in person as well, and she's actually very excited for this type of thing to come into her area. All others didn't voice any concern at the time, and we're happy to take the leaflet.
Okay, Ms. Summers, could you, just for the public's benefit and ours, who received notices of, of the public hearing?
So all the adjoining property owners were mailed. You want to go through the list?
Sure.
Julie Mitchell, Michael James Rustee, Scott St. Clair, Catherine Wallen, Carol Parrish, John and Brenda Linty, Richard Lambert, Lila Sardento, Betty and Bobby Settle, William Seal Jr., and a group called Miscellaneous Real Estate Property LLC.
Okay. And how are those notices sent by?
Mail.
Just regular mail?
Standard mail.
Mr. Parrish, did your sister receive her notice that you were...
Yes, yes.
She did? Okay. All right.
When I talked to Ms. White, the other person that has the joint property with the website, and she was worried about it.
Okay. All right. So that's, that's all I have for now. If you want to, you're welcome to sit down and, I mean...
Thank you.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So pursuing this, this point that Mr. Sharp has made, I assume that construction, assume without knowing that construction of this kind of facility would make it difficult for you to, would make it not what you would want is to have a permit, especially a permit that simply went with you and would terminate if you sold the property?
I would be all right with that.
Say that, can you repeat it once?
In other words, it would be a condition on this permit, and Mr. Sharp can correct me, that, that if you sold, if the property changed ownership, the...
And was sold, yep.
The, the use would no longer be...
The permit would...
The permit would expire.
And you're asking if I'm okay with that? I am absolutely okay with that. Because realistically, at this point, this is an investment for my business and for the community. And if at any point we pull out, we would sell the lot as is. And to be honest, at that point, if they want to use the buildings for whatever their endeavors is, we can still sell it as flex use. The permit is not, the permit being with the property and me selling the property is not my main priority for pursuing this. So if it means in the future I sell it without the permit, that's fine, as long as I'm covered while I run my company there.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I?
Yes, please.
I guess, just in the interest of a robust conversation, I would note that it is within our right to set conditions around hours of operation and the like. So some of the questions that we've had about, you know, what the actual plan is, you know, are within our right to, you know, to, to, to set limits on. Just full disclosure about the range of possibilities here. But I want to go back to what I don't quite understand, and that is the question about this being advertised in the wrong district. I was just talking to...
So I, I received the property card from the Commissioner of Revenue, and on the back it does state which district they're in. And this clearly says the Jackson District. And I believe that they pulled that information from, I guess, the registrar's office.
And so then the public notice cited, the public notice cited Jackson District in it?
So I guess the question is, what's the real determining?
Was there, was there a change in the precincts?
It was several years, long time ago, it was by the deed.
What?
It was by the deed, not by the police.
In any event, I, the way I, the way I think we ought to handle this is, I mean, we're here, we're in the middle of a public hearing, or we've had a, a public hearing. And obviously, a concern has been raised by Mr. Henry. We'll, we'll just have to nail this down after this, and...
Yeah, I'm concerned that it would, any decision would have to be revisited if it is in fact misadvertised. So I guess the first question is, I'm not, I'm not yet confident that it has been. But if it, if it has been, I guess that, that is an issue.
Is that a fatal thing?
Yeah, it would have to be re-advertised.
Are you sure?
Yeah, it would have to be re-advertised.
The neighbors.
Right.
Well, I believe what our, our volunteer counsel noted is that a hearing isn't required. So it's hard to see how it, it could be fatal to the, to the application.
Has this been, this hasn't been advertised to the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Not yet, no.
No.
Because we haven't made a recommendation.
It would have to be.
The tax count for this property also indicates the Jackson District.
Ms. Summers, where's the district designation shown on here?
She's actually looking for the deed.
I'm not sure I understand the difference.
Yeah, I'd like to clarify. What, I mean, it goes with the deed.
But the deed...
So when the county was founded, there's a, I don't know, there's something over there that describes all county boundaries and all the magistrate district boundaries. So everybody's deed says what, what magistrate district their property is located according to their district. It's laid out in that.
And the commissioner.
The authority says it's completely separate, and that's nothing to do with that. That doesn't change the magistrate district lines. It changes the voting district lines when they do what they're going to do.
The commissioner.
Well, I don't know that, would it go that the advertising requirement, we have checked the county attorney. It doesn't require that we say what magistrate district it is. You have to have the address.
Thank you. So we're, what we're going to do tonight is we're going to continue with this. And if there, if there's some fatal error in the public advertisement, I'm very cautious about this because we have run into problems before where notices have been void of an issue or a decision was void of an issue because of a failed notice. But I think, I think, given the, the data from the Commissioner of Revenue and given the proper advertise, I mean, given the advertising, the notice of all the adjacent property owners, I think most of the pieces are there. And I think it's reasonable to continue. And if for some reason it's determined that the advertising was not accurate, we'll, we'll have to address that at that time.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you for that. And if I, if I may then... Well, thank you for that. Um, and if I, if I may then, uh, with, uh, with sympathy and respect for the applicant, I would like to move that we recommend denial of this application, noting the concerns about uh, the fit within the, the community as discussed thoroughly this evening.
Okay, Mr. Light has put forward a motion um, to recommend uh, to the Board of Zoning Appeals denial of the special use permit application twenty-one dash zero nine dash zero five. Does anyone wish to second Mr. Light's motion?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second are on the table. Any further discussion from the members of the Planning Commission?
I, I'll just say, and this is a tough one for me because I, I really honestly think it's a great use, but I, the concern about it being just this commercial carve-out in this otherwise highly agricultural area is um, is I think is just, it's a problem here. So um, yeah, I'm gonna have to support the, support the motion.
Any further discussion? And Ms. Wagner, just again procedurally, so you under, I, I think we've said this a couple of times, but just so you're clear. So this will go to the Board of Zoning Appeals after whatever vote we make here. And um, and so then it'll be advertised uh, for a public hearing and you'll go forward the Board of Zoning Appeals. Okay? So it's a motion to recommend to the Board of Zoning Appeals denial of the special use permit. Any further and final discussion regarding the same? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of recommendation of denial to the Board of Zoning Appeals, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone voting nay? Okay, thank you. Thanks very much for withstanding our questions and for your excellent preparation and, and response to all the public comments. Thank you very much. And thanks to the members of the Planning Commission for your good questions. We'll just take a, a, a minute or two to let everyone go home if they wish to go home. Hi Lisa, how are you?
I remember that application, I don't remember that check.
Oh, yes, it's Phil.
Okay, um. Alright, um, thank you for sticking around, and um, we'll go ahead and open the public comment period. And if you wish to speak about anything of interest to the Planning Commission, here's your, here's your chance, and this is just general public comment. Somehow I knew you couldn't resist.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, David Conick from Stonewall, Northona District. I send you all a note with a letter that I wrote a couple of years ago about this uh, proposed amendment. And I, I just want to say, as I said, I think two months ago when I was here in August, that it's a year since the Planning Commission did the village maps. And I think that's a really urgent thing to get back to. I think that it's been September, so what month are we in, October, right? So thirteen months ago, we took up whether or not the, the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance to incorporate all the provisions about the cell towers that we worked out and hammered out in the new comp plan. And, and as I, as far as I know, that's all drafted. Basically, we changed all, we used the same words except changed should to shall. And proposed it as an amendment to the zoning ordinance. I know you did the short towers, but the regular towers, I don't, got, kind of got lost in the shuffle. The comp plan says that's a priority matter. There are various other things that affect a lot of people in the county. Besides those two things, the subdivision ordinance, uh, the, especially the part about the family subdivision provisions, and various and sundry other things that are still on our work plan that we adopted July a year ago. And so I don't understand how this particular thing that basically affects a very small slice of the county suddenly kind of got catapulted up to the front of the line. And um, I, I don't think that's appropriate. And I also.
You referring to what? What are you referring to?
This golf course, this driving, driving range thing is, is on the agenda for tonight.
I thought it was a four-letter word you was afraid to say in public.
There's no four-letter words that I'm afraid to say. I don't read the Republican News, it's right in there. So, so anyway, for all the reasons I already stated in my note to you and in my letter of, of two thousand and eighteen, and plus, uh, as I pointed out, Phil Irwin was right in the minutes, said the exact same thing that Chris Parrish said and several of you said tonight. It's not appropriate to put a commercial use in the agriculture zone. It violates the comp plan and it violates a lot of other principles that are fundamental to our zoning ordinance and our basic plan. And I, if you start making those little distinctions, oh, well, you can't have a kennel, but you can't have a driving range, you're going out on pretty thin ice. And uh, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Well, I'm here.
Carolyn Butler Peatman, I'm helping you out.
I live in Sperryville. And I'm here because I saw that that driving range was coming back up tonight. I thought it was denied by the Board of Supervisors in eighteen, so I really don't know why it's coming back up. But I'm opposed to anything, any commercial business that's gonna pull water away from the residents in Sperryville. And it's a fact that there are two houses presently, they're not occupied. The two properties on the corner have dry wells. They're just dead properties. Lester Dill drilled a well, never got any water, so he was hooked onto the hotel. Well, now it's two separate owners. What's he gonna do with that? And Esther's house has no water now. So it's pulling, that golf range, or whatever that is of their golf, is pulling water away. And so the next person to go is gonna be Tom Tupper. You know, I'm up on a hill, but I don't want to live in a dead town with these vacant properties that were residential. So, please, you know, we don't need any more of that stuff mainly because of the water. It's not about personalities, it's not about the people to me. Everybody to me is equal, we're all the same. But it's just about preserving a residential area. So I appreciate it if you would consider this with, in the future, when the more breweries come up. They take a lot of water. When the golf, anything comes up, that takes water. So please, just consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? General public comment? Tommy Atkins, we always enjoy hearing from you. You don't have anything to say? Alright.
I, I guess I'll just echo and support.
Would, uh, would you mind speaking, um, at the microphone? Thank you.
Okay, I am Tommy Atkins, I'm from the Jackson District, and uh, I would support and echo exactly what David has said here about uh, the, the golf course and everything. I have no problem with, you know, who they are, but it's where it's at. And I really think that this board really has more higher priorities to work with than to deal, try and fit a driving range into an agricultural area. And one of those that I feel like is close to me is, I think y'all need to be working on in a top priority. If you want, we can label it any way you want to, but affordable housing. Now, you have some tools in your toolbox that you can make some changes, that some affordable housing can be built here. But if you can't hold to what you're doing right now, all that you're doing, you're just supporting a house for a wealthy person. Because only a wealthy person can afford a house in this county today. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Any, have we exhausted, I think we've exhausted the remaining members of the public. Any, anyone else wishing to speak? General public comment? Okay, um, thanks very much for your thoughtful comments, and we will close the public comment period. Okay, so under old business, um, there, there is this proposed ordinance amendment. Ms. Summers, if you could walk us through briefly the history of how we got here and um, and summarize for us what the proposed amendment is. And for the public's interest, this is just, this is a preliminary discussion of this ordinance amendment. We would have to schedule a public hearing for it. It would have to go to the Board of Supervisors, who would also have to have a public hearing. So there's nothing being decided on this tonight, but rather a decision on how to move forward. Ms. Summers?
Thank you. Um, back in two thousand and eighteen, the Board did request the memo through Mr. Curry that the Planning Commission review the current ordinance to consider golf driving ranges after a tax amendment application was submitted by Mr. Miller. Did, uh, did receive a complaint about Mr. Miller's driving range, met with him regarding it, and he agreed to cease all commercial use. And since two thousand and eighteen, the Planning Commission has taken no action or made any progress with this item. As the draft reads, the amendment would provide a new category of use for a limited golf driving range that can be put in use to be a special exception in a non-commercial area on larger parcels, but significant restrictions. I have pulled up on the screen, uh, the proposed restrictions. So.
Why don't, if you could just read through those?
Additional standards for limited golf driving range is one, no lighting, fixed reportable, shall be used in association with the use. Number two, no containment netting or other barriers shall be used in association with the use. Three, no structure shall be constructed or used that exceeds ten feet in height above the ground surface. Four, no more than one concurrent user per acre based on the parcel size up to thirty-five maximum, users maximum. And number five, the minimum lot size requirement should be twenty-five acres.
Okay, um, thank you. So um, I, I will go ahead and open this up for discussion by the Planning Commission members. Ms. Ishi, would you like to jump in and get us started? And I think that the end goal here is to decide um, what we're going to do next, and I, and I, I believe one path would be just to schedule for a public hearing because it seems like there's a lot of public interest in this, and we've already heard some of that tonight.
Um, yeah, thanks very much, uh, and thanks for everybody's interest in this. I just want to clarify because um, we got some comments that made it sound as if there was a specific application before the, before the commission, and it's my understanding that we have no specific application. We're simply looking at uh, a preliminary discussion as to whether there ought to be some ordinance change to be a little bit more uh, allow, allow some sort of driving, golf driving ranges.
To be, just to be clear, Mr. Miller some years ago submitted, um, any citizen may request um, amendments to our zoning ordinance, and there's an application to make such a request and a fee paid. So in a sense, it was, it is an application.
I, I haven't seen that application as so, I don't believe, others, maybe I'm missing it, uh, but all I've seen for our agenda tonight was uh, a, a zoning, a potential, some, some preliminary language for, for Mr. Curry for potential zoning ordinance. So if there's an application actually before us, I, I personally am not aware of it, but.
Uh, Ms. Summers, am I incorrect about that? My understanding was that he had, he had applied, he had submitted a request.
He did submit a request, I cannot remember what.
I, I, I think the term.
Yeah, but it is on the list of items that the Board is.
My question is, it was driven by an application?
Correct.
I think the correct.
I'm sorry?
I have the minutes in the Board of Supervisor meeting in June of two thousand and eighteen, it's the one. The application must be known. So we have.
I wasn't, I understand that, but I'm just, the her, the state, the statement that there was not an application was incorrect.
I think the distinction.
All I'm trying to figure out is what we're trying to decide tonight.
Go ahead, Ms., Mr. Light, go ahead.
I was gonna just try without necessarily regard for the, I think there's a difference between a petition or uh, whatever the right verb is for uh, a zoning change and an application for a special exception or special.
Okay, thank you.
So what we're talking about here tonight is not any specific site, uh, even though I think we all know what site we're talking about or what site would be the one that would like to use this proposed revision to the ordinance. Um, and so, you know.
Fair enough.
I think what's before us is what's before us with respect to the uh, the text edits. And, you know, in that sense, I think, uh, I think it's worth noting what Mr. Conick pointed out that, you know, there's a whole list of uh, proposed changes to the zoning ordinance, and this is among the, among the, among the many.
An individual request, a text amendment was my point. Anyway, go ahead.
Yeah, and I, again, I don't, I don't, I don't deny that that's undoubtedly true, I just haven't seen that request. All I've seen is this language for a proposed zoning ordinance, so, change um, that was drafted by Mr. Curry. So that, you know, may, maybe, so that's what I'm responding to. Um, and so I, I'd also like to say that, you know, I, if this has been on the agenda for all this time, the other things that were on, I'm, that were requested were the sign ordinance, which we're looking at with the Berkeley Group, the permitting process for tourist homes, which we addressed, um, review of the comp plan for solar farms and wind, which we addressed. Um, and so this is the only one outstanding on this, at least this memo Mr. Curry gave to us. So I don't, I don't, I think this bears a lot of thought and discussion, but I, it seems appropriate to at least have it, have brought it up. The other thing is, I um, some, some have expressed concerns that this might be spot zoning, and I just want to say this is not spot zoning. This is, this is zoning that would apply across the board to the county, uh, so whether it applies to one applicant who may or may not apply under this, I don't know, but it, but it would apply across the county because it's this ordinance change for the whole county. So, yeah, I don't think this is spot zoning. So uh, that having been said, um, you know, as a general statement, again, uh, no more than some of the other things we've considered tonight, I, I can see that driving ranges, um, and frankly, I'm no golfer. So I, I have no dog in that fight in that sense, but uh, but I, I have seen them be, you know, pretty um, low-intensitive uses. When I was up in Northern Virginia, there was a putt-putt golf course, as I was just saying, that uh, that was way back in the trees and you never saw it, you never heard it, and then it was there for like fifty years, and then they tore that down and built a housing subdivision, and you see and hear the housing subdivision. So I know we do have to think of ways uh, for our large landowners in particular to, you know, afford to keep their large properties. This may be one, um, so I'm not opposed to the concept of, you know, finding ways to accommodate it appropriately. I, I don't, I don't know that I think that we need this limited golf driving range standard per se, but I'm certainly open to listening to what other people think.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Oh, go ahead. No, no, no.
Well, you know, it's, sometimes the perception uh, is, is greater than the actual facts and truth. And uh, I, I feel like I'm a little bit on a, feel like we're in a little bit of an awkward place. You know, the discussion of this golf course pops up here, here in October, and we have a county elections next month where the beneficiary, beneficiary of this change in the ordinance is running for supervisor. And I feel almost like it's being rushed to get this settled if he wins before he takes office. And I don't want to give the impression that we are, um, you know, clearing the path, getting anything out of the way, or, or this or that, you know. This popped to the surface pretty quickly here, and it, it doesn't quite smell right, it probably is, everything's okay. But I think just for the uh, presentation to the public and clear uh, transparency that we shouldn't be talking about this until January.
Okay, anyone else?
I'll just say that I think it's, um, we are looking for ways to help farmers and uh, maintain their land. We've talked about some people that are in favor of having uh, solar farms on a, on a property, uh, to help a farmer earn some money. I would say this is a lot less intense use, um, that um, also provides the same benefits. So this type of thing uh, seems very low-key and very uh, low. also provides the same benefit. So this type of thing, uh, seems very low key and very, uh, low impact. So I, I don't have a, I'd like to maybe work on this thing, but I don't want to, uh, but I wouldn't want to throw it out just out of hand.
I would just observe that most driving ranges that I've seen that are not like commercial driving ranges are attached on the same property as a golf course. So people would come into play, they might go out into the driving range, hit a few balls to get warmed up and then go out and play golf. So it seems like to have a standalone driving range, which I think in effect this might be if we're, I know we're not talking about that site, but if it were at that site, it's more of a standalone driving range. And that connotes much more of a commercial type of thing than something that's just incidental to a golf course. That would be my answer.
Okay, anyone else?
I agree with Mr. Henry. I don't think we should talk about this until January.
The election's November second. How about we, can we talk about it in December?
With you, why don't you let the, if, if that.
Well, I don't care. I'm just asking.
If that particular supervisor wins, then he owns it in January.
Well, yeah, we could talk about, we could talk about in December and just by virtue of scheduling a public hearing, it's gonna end up dealt with by the board of supervisor. It's a, it is, it is a board of supervisors vote ultimately, and so that's gonna happen no matter what. Next year.
You know what? I, I gotta say, I don't care if we put this off. It, it doesn't, I don't think it matters that much because it's, it's, it's a, it's an ordinance amendment. I just object to this idea of, um, pulling politics into this and I, I don't think that's appropriate. I think that, uh, you know, we did things, a, a lot of things that did or didn't do a lot of things at the end of last year. Uh, that's just not what we should be looking at. We should be looking at what this ordinance is. We should take as much time as we think we need to, to take to look at it, to consider it. If that takes three months and a couple of public hearings, so be it. If it takes one month, so be it. But I don't, I don't think that those kinds of, those kinds of considerations are appropriate.
Well, it's the appearance, it's the appearance of, of, of what we're doing. I have no problem taking three months. It's just when the clock starts and I think the clocks should start after any appearance of, of, uh, favoritism, special treatment or whatever can be eliminated. And, and, you know, this gentleman in the county that is giving the county money and there was statements of, you know, he had conflicts of interest.
Right.
And it arises all the time. I think we, that we, if we can stay clear of any mention of a, of a conflict or special treatment, special interest, we, we maintain integrity of the commission and integrity of the commission is, I think is, is very important.
I hope we remember, I hope we remember that in a lot of other contexts and I, I.
I hope you do too. I hope you do too.
Okay. Could, could I, could I, uh,
Yeah, go ahead.
Just say a couple of things about the, the substance.
I should have my gavel tonight.
Substance of this. Uh, just a couple of points in case folks haven't really looked closely at it. I think part of the discussion, I think Alex, to your point, um, right now golf courses are allowed as under special exception in Hag District. And I think part of the, what's been noted as a, as something that maybe isn't intuitive is that where you can have a golf course, you can't have a driving range. So in part, this is a, this is a desire to, uh, address that. The, the other point is as to this question of whether we need something about limited golf driving range. We already have, uh, a use for, I guess, unlimited golf right, driving ranges that are of the more, I would say, obnoxious type. So I think recalling the previous discussion, um, you know, back whenever this was, when we were talking about it, there, there was a notion that, you know, if we're gonna allow this or if we're gonna even consider it, there's gotta be the, you know, uh, rappahannock version of this, which is, you know, quiet and shaggy and, you know, easily folded up and taken away at night kind of thing. So I, you know, I do think the topic has some area. Just one other comment about, you know, priorities and the like. Clearly this is not the most pressing matter before us, but, but the other factor is, you know, are things easy or hard to deal with? Some of the things we've changed, um, were not high on the priority list easier either, but they were easy, so we dealt with them.
That's right.
And sometimes the things that are high priority, affordable housing, signs, cell towers, solar are hard and they take more time. So I, you know, I think it's, I do think we need to be mindful of how we're spending our time, but I don't think there's anything wrong with us taking on things that are perceived to be easy. I'll just close by saying this doesn't appear like it's going to be easy, so maybe we should just leave it for the time being.
Well, and here's, uh, here's the reality. The reality is that, um, um, Mr. Miller has had people hitting golf balls in a field of a five twenty-two and I believe someone filed a complaint about that. And so that's, and, and he was, my understanding is he was operating under uh, some misunderstanding about what, what he's allowed to do with like no structures or anything in the field. So we all have the benefit of being able to actually walk over there and see what it would look like if it was permitted because it's there. They have their flags in a field and stacks of golf balls and no structures. So it's an unusual situation where you can go do a, a site visit and see what it would look like. So if we do choose to table this for a month or two months, um, and I think, I think Mr. Henry's point really is well taken and I, I do think it's important that, um, we make sure that we're operating in a absolutely transparent manner. And if people feel concerned about this because it might affect one person who's running for public office, I'm actually okay with leaving it there. So as far as timing goes, um, I'll, I guess I'll just defer to one of you if you wanna make a proposal in the form of a motion, um, until when we ought to table this. I think if we tabled it to next month, that would probably be fine.
So what would the supervisors have on their table?
Well, um, it would, if, if we, if we vote on it, if, and everyone reads the draft and comes back with any comments or changes on the draft that Michelle's put up on the screen, come back next month in November, it's, we're in October right now, so in November, and we schedule a, a planning commission public hearing for December. And depending on the outcome of that, or regardless of the outcome of that, then it seems the schedule would be that the board supervisor would hear it next calendar year at some point. I think I'm correct.
I think you're, I think you're correct, uh, Ms. Ritz. And I, I have no objection to that. I think that's a, a, an appropriate way to handle this. We, we, we've been given some, you know, preliminary language. Obviously folks are gonna have to
Yep.
chew it over a little bit. And, uh, then we, we couldn't possibly do a public hearing on this next month anyway unless we just voted on this right now, which it doesn't sound like we're gonna do.
Yeah, and I, and I, we've all heard from people in the last few days about their concern about this and I think we owe it to them to, um, do this as cleanly and transparently as possible. So anyone want to put forward a motion?
I'll put that motion forward.
Okay.
I'll move that, uh, we, we, uh, table this till next month, uh, to, to consider the, the language that Mr. Curry has provided to us and, uh, for further discussion at next month's meeting.
Thank you. Has anyone wished a second or motion?
I'll second that.
Uh, Mr. Kohler, thank you. And, um, uh, just for brief further discussion, I would encourage you all, um, if, if you go, if you don't know where, where the site is, it's adjacent to the Rappahannock Water and Sewer Authority property. So definitely go and take a look. Um, any, any discussion?
So next month is just gonna be a discussion on the ordinance? And then.
And that, we could, and at that point, we could vote to schedule for a public hearing at the planning commission. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, all right. Thanks a lot and thank you for your, your input. Okay, very, very quickly, uh, Berkeley Group, the, the board of supervisors, my colleagues on the board of supervisors went ahead and um, gave us approval to use all of our, all of our budgeted funds for the Berkeley Group, um, project. And so it's twenty thousand dollars for starters. Um, we don't yet have Berkeley Group's detailed, um, scope of work memorandum yet, but we should get that in the coming days. I was hoping to have it by tonight. It, it seems like what they're going to, um, propose to us is a baseline, what they call a diagnostic review of our zoning ordinance, but noting that our priorities that we've identified to them are the sign ordinance and then also all of the event related material. But they, their method of working is at a minimum to do an initial diagnostic review so that they can at least take into account any weaknesses in sort of the permit review process that might, might be residual in our zoning ordinance or any other procedural things that might ultimately affect their recommendations on, for example, signs or events. So it's really gonna, we think that for the twenty thousand dollars, we should be able to get through, um, the diagnostic, um, work and then, uh, uh, also additional work on the sign ordinance and on the event related provisions of the ordinance. So I think it's a good start. Um, and then once we get into it and depending on how things go, uh, we certainly on the board of supervisors will consider, um, appropriating additional funds to the planning commission so that this work can continue. But I think this will be a good starting point in Tuskegee. And, um, I'm sure you're here for, and I apologize, you really, I really, I try to manage the agenda in such a way that people aren't waiting and you got the losing end of the deal tonight. So sorry for that. Um, okay, so we're on to new business and then we'll wrap it up.
Could I just ask one question about that point? Um, I was surprised not to hear solar or renewable energy on that list. Was that consciously omitted?
Uh, for Berkeley Group?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, no, good question. So we're starting with, because they're twenty thousand dollars there and this is sort of a new way of using the Berkeley Group, we're, we're starting with the two things plus the diagnostics that the twenty thousand dollars should be able to cover. And Mr., I should mention, full disclosure, Mr. Curry and I had a, a video conference call with the Berkeley Group folks. So we kind of talked through what could be done with the money we have currently. But for sure, um, we mentioned solar is another big area where we would want them to weigh in.
But, but not within.
We're just gonna start here and see how quickly we can, efficiently we can move. Thank you. Okay, so under new business, and this is our last agenda item tonight, um, this is a preliminary review of a special exception permit application number twenty-one dash ten dash zero-two Schmitz, tax map number fourteen dash twenty C. And this is, uh, a relatively unusual, and this is a request for two tent campsites. And Ms. Summers, if you could quickly give us a summary of how we got here.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
The property is located at thirteen, at one thirty-four by three Crestal Road. It's fifty-eight acres in size and seven hundred agricultural. Currently there is a farm winery on the property. Um, they do wish to offer, um, two primitive camp sites up their winery. Um, they would be offering, um, the area for the campsite, a picnic table and a camp fire ring. Um, each site would be accessed by trail from the winery. Uh, B dot comments are still pending. They have been contacted and I received an email from Meds Carter, the whole department, that at this time they have no objection to the proposal. And because there's only two campsites proposed, falls with, falls under three, which requires, three or more requires a license through the Department of Health.
Okay. Great. And, um, you're the applicant. Uh, okay, would you, do you wanna, um, explain anything to us? If you do, you just step up to the microphone if you don't mind. Thanks a lot again for your patience tonight.
This is Max Schmitz. Thanks for having me here. Um, yeah, I wanna, uh, have two primitive campsites to allow, you know, part of the agritourism business of the farm winery is getting people from the city out to Rappahannock to spend, you know, money and enjoy beautiful views and that sort of stuff. So.
And can you just describe, uh, and I know the materials are in here, but just quickly describe to us the property, what the sites are gonna look like, how they're gonna be used.
The property is just under sixty acres. The sites are a picnic table and a, like a ring fire pit.
Okay, and, and, all right, thank you. And then and had you intended to do more than two, but then just stuck with two because of what Ms. Summers just explained?
Yeah, so I wanted, I wanna test it out and there was a lot of health department involvement to
Okay.
get it classified to the campsite. So limiting it to two keeps us in a, in a easy zone where we can see how it works out.
Okay.
Are you Mr. Schmitz?
I'm Mr. Schmitz.
I thought you was an older man. I met you many years ago.
Oh, that's John G. That's my grandpa.
I see. So he gave the property to you?
No, my, um, uh, my grandpa and grandma lived out in, uh, on Firehouse Lane, Little Washington.
Oh, okay.
And my, uh, parents were coming out to visit them and bought a property on Crestal Road. And that's where my grandpa started. The vineyard, like twenty-five years ago. And I've picked up, uh, the, the lead on, you know.
So just make it clear, are you the owner of the property?
I'm the son of the owner. I, uh,
So you're not the owner, you represent the owner?
I have a business on the property and I lease the property.
Okay. Great, um. Okay, great. Um, do you have any questions for the, the younger Mr. Schmitz?
Hey, question for Michelle when it comes to the health department thing. If he wanted three, then he has to involve the health department to a greater degree.
Correct.
If he had, and regardless of the size of his property.
Yes.
Ooh, okay.
Okay.
Blows my mind.
Any, any questions for?
Um, I, I guess I have one or two. The other thing that, from the email exchanges that seemed to be something of an issue is that, you know, what, how do you define a campsite? You know, if it's not tied to the number of people. And I know I saw some of the back and forth about the number of people and that, I think that's a line of, that might require some better understanding, at least on my part. Uh, but I guess in terms of a question, I saw the, maybe you could explain a little better what this is showing us. Um, I assume that these are fixed sites on the spot, that these wouldn't like rotate or, I mean, what, what are you, what are we actually seeing with those little shaded areas in the planned area? Does that have anything? Yeah, please.
For sure.
So the shaded areas are actually the vines. Uh, they'll just, uh, if you know the, you can guess that's where you are. We have a couple of buildings up here and we have, um, the campsites are in the, uh, the back, basically.
I see. Okay, so there are, there are specific spots back there that are, would be defined as, you know, one would imagine.
The sites are set up with a picnic table and a fire, but they're not, they're primitive sites, so they're.
There's not much, there's no boundaries or anything, yeah.
It's something you can just pick up and move and say it's, uh, the site's, you know, ten feet here now, but.
Okay, so you might rotate them to just deal with where.
Well, to minimize the impact on like the, the grass and stuff, yeah.
Okay, a, and, um, and they're only, um, where, you have to walk into them? Or can you drive up to the?
Drive up to them, yeah.
You can drive up. Those are, I mean, uh, the reason I ask is it is, I, I think an unusual applicant, application. So I'm just, I'm curious about. But now I have any other question.
Anyone else?
Yeah, the, the bathroom that's shown, you have the winery and the parking area and the bathroom and is that just a little bathroom that's off by itself?
It's just a little barn bathroom, yeah.
It's a barn, a little barn.
It's a little barn bathroom.
Okay.
What, what's a barn bathroom?
Yeah.
It's a small building. It's like a eight foot building with a bathroom in it.
Is it a pit?
No.
You got running water.
Running water with a system.
Okay, so, and how far is it back to the campsites from there?
Hundred to two hundred feet.
Well, that's all, okay. And the, are you gonna have like platforms or just allow people to tent wherever they want?
The campsites are just a picnic table with a metal like ring fire pit.
Okay.
Is there a little road or something to drive back to it or is it just?
No, it's a mode path. It's just grass.
But people will drive back to it?
But they can drive back to it, yeah. It's not like rough terrain or anything.
Okay. Anyone else?
I, I just wanna, I just had a little trouble following the fact pattern here as it were. So you had an application for a sewer link for your, for the barn, which I assume is the bathroom there that you're showing. And so now you've worked that out with Meds, so you're gonna get that approved for a hundred gallons per day.
Yes.
Great. And you got a well, which is situated where?
I believe the well is right around here.
Okay, so that's serving the winery and the bathroom.
It's serving the bathroom, yeah.
Okay. And so, so that's what the people in the primitive campsites are gonna walk down and use that, that bathroom? Is that what is? And so, so that's what the people in the primitive campsites are gonna walk down and use that, that bathroom? Is that what is-
Yeah.
Mine? And you say kit, it's, Med, mentioned that you had a, a, on a website that there were kitchen facilities also?
No, they're not.
Okay, so there are no, so no kitchen facilities for the campsite?
There's no kitchen facilities.
Okay. So, uh, all right, that's, that's all for the moment.
Okay.
I saw, does the winery have a bathroom?
The same bathroom barn, yeah.
Still, so, so do you have, do people come to the winery?
They can. Not many people show up.
But it's not a tasting room?
Huh?
It's not a tasting room?
Uh, we don't have a, we don't have like a physical tasting, or we have, you know, a, a storage area, but, if you guys wanna come out and see it, you're welcome to. I'd, I'd appreciate any.
So you sell wine from the winery, but you don't really have tastings and a bar and all that kind of stuff? There are bathrooms for them, except unless they wanna go out to the barn?
Unless they wanna go up to the bathroom barn, yeah.
Unless they want to what?
Go up to this, uh, the barn with the bathroom in it.
How, how many toilets are in there? I'm just curious, yeah.
Uh, there's two, there's two toilets in there.
Okay.
One on each side.
Yeah, exactly.
They're on top of each other.
Is there a shower or something?
No, there's no shower. It's past my bedtime.
So is the, um, so the, so the bathroom will service the campsite and the winery building, so and Meds, was Meds aware of that? She didn't mention that in here, but, uh, she was, she was assuming that you had adequate septic for the bathroom campsite.
Well, we, we also have, um, we have, uh, Porta-Johns as well. Um, so maybe she put, put that into our calculation.
I imagine that the same people that are camping are also enjoying-
Also enjoying the wine, exactly.
You gonna advertise these on Airbnb?
Um, sure. I don't know if you were joking or not.
No, I think, I mean, but there, there, there are, I mean, there are camping, there are camp sites, specific site, I mean, websites. I forgot.
Somebody asked Michelle this next question. Would that be subject to the rent tax?
No, it's not. But, I mean, there, there is a, there is a site for-
Trend in occupancy tax?
I'm sorry?
Trend in occupancy tax?
Yeah. Is it subject to that?
I think so, yeah.
They get you every time, don't they?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any, um, do you have any limitations on the size of a tent someone can bring?
Under 200?
Um, I-
That's a pretty big tents.
I don't, I don't impose restrictions. I've, you know, I've never even thought about that.
Yeah.
But you are limited, you're limiting it to two people per campsite?
Two people camping, or two parties camping?
Take it on a big tent.
That was up to Meds' recommendations.
So we can, we can either, um, vote to schedule a public hearing on this, or we can send it on to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation. Either way, whatever you think. And Brian, if you wanted-
I believe that we, um, forward this on to the Board of Supervisors for a recommendation of approval. I'd like to see where this goes. So I'm glad, I'm glad you're, um, it's neat that you're doing it at small scale. I mean, it's easier for you anyways, but it's kinda interesting.
Thanks. Anyone want to second that motion?
I'll second it.
All right, great. Any just, any further discussion?
Um, I, I think this is an interesting use, and I, it looks great to me. I, again, I, I think if we set it for our own public hearing, we'll know whether we actually wanna approve it or not, so I won't support that motion, but I do support the appearance of this use.
Okay, great.
So I would just comment that this is again a novel use, and I, I agree that we should have a hearing, so I'm not going to support it either for that reason. I, I think eventually I would, I could support it, but I think this deserves a hearing.
Yeah, I think it does, too.
Okay, um, so, uh, the motion, the motion of Mr. Schulman, recommendation of Board of Supervisors for approval, and the second was from-
Al.
Mr. Henry.
Al, okay. So, um, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Um, who said nay? Just to be clear? Okay, all right, we need another motion.
Make a motion that we have a public hearing at the Planning Commission next month.
Okay, second?
I'll second that.
And Mr. Light, any discussion?
I mean, this is a very benign use. It's got two far wings, two picnic tables, got the Health Department. Four people gonna use 50 acres. This is, this is just a-
I, I agree with, I agree, I agree.
You have, you have no, you have no means of knowing just because the permit says two. We have no review of this. I mean, I'd like to hear from the public what has been going on there, for example, that we don't even know about.
I've been going on the property once every couple of years for 10 years.
I'm talking about the last year.
Well, he's been growing grapes and has consistent-
I think we need to hear from the neighbors.
Well, he's got four people on two different sites on 50, almost 60 acres. It's definitely gonna be a seasonal use probably. I can't imagine people out there in December, January, and February. And, you know, it's a benign use, uh, you know, the deer crossing the property are, are more of a nuisance than four people. Something that we should notice. If he was doing 12 primitive sites or 20, that's a totally different creature. But for two sites like this-
Yeah, it's pretty low-key.
Yeah. I appreciate the sentiment, but we had a motion and voted, and, and, and so now we have another one, so I understand.
I just had one, uh, cause I didn't catch it, and I haven't been over to your property, and I apologize for that, and I will make an effort to head over there.
Please do.
Uh, yeah, um, so just on the winery side, could you just tell me what's going on there? I mean-
Yeah, we have, uh, well, so it's, uh, let me think. Um, we've been making wine since 2016. We were working with Rappahannock Cellars first, and now we're working with, Kiefermont, my cousin-in-law, Carl's the winemaker there.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I know Carl.
So, uh, you know, it's a good family connection there. Um, and I started out, uh, just doing wine festivals, and then, um, when COVID hit, we didn't have any wine festivals, so I sort of took that as an opportunity to, uh, you know, try and get people outside and, you know, to Rappahannock, and it's, uh, sort of a, a new venture in that sense.
Okay, and then, so you said there's no, and again, I'm just asking because I haven't been there, but you don't have a tasting room?
We have a, uh, we have a building, and I have, uh, tables out. If you wanna come out and do a tasting, but yeah, we have a-
I see.
An outdoor, you know-
I see, so it's, it's really a, truly a farm winery in that sense.
It's a farm winery, yeah.
Okay, cool. Um, all right, so basically the motion, just so you're aware, the motion on the table is to schedule a public hearing next month.
Okay.
Uh, before this body, and then after that, it'll go on to the Board of Supervisors. So the first motion was just to send it on to the Board of Supervisors, which would have moved it more quickly, um, and that failed, so. But this is to schedule a public hearing, and then, um, I would expect that we'll vote next month after the public hearing, and we'll see if any neighbors or anyone show up after being noticed about this, okay?
If this motion passes, we have a vote.
We haven't, I'm just, yes, so, um, so the motion is on the table, um, to schedule a public hearing for the next regular meeting of the Planning Commission. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Nay. Okay, um, so that's four to three, and we'll have a public hearing next month. And thanks again for being here so long for two campsites, two and a half hours.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks a lot. Good, yeah, good luck to you. So we'll, we'll just see you next month, and, and we'll, we'll move it ahead. What's that? Yeah, well, for sure, yeah.
It'll sell.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, like I said, normally I try to read who's here and rearrange the agenda, but I just couldn't do that tonight, so.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, thanks, thanks again.
Thank you.
Yeah, good luck to you.
You too.
All right, um, thanks a lot. Um, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Light, thank you.
And for the record, the clock happens to be almost right.
Uh, second to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. And all those in favor, say aye.
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 The clock is right.
Thank you.